Tina, okay, so good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, December 21st, 2020. The time is 11:04 a.m. We're meeting for a weekly Commissioner's Status Report. In person, present are Commissioners Duncan and Filios, joining us by phone, Commissioner Bill Brooks. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, I would just suggest that we move the two executive sessions to the end of the agenda.
That's fine. So we'll do it just ahead of Pending Items Status Review? Does that work?
I say we go through Pending Item.
And then do it?
That's not going to take long at all.
Okay, fine. All right, then, so we're going to take up Item Two first, which is Parks and Waterways Snowgroomer Grant Application. We're moving that up to the first position. Nick, take it away, please.
Thanks, Commissioners, Nick and I for the record. Commissioners, as we do every year, if we have a grant, we like to get it in front of the Commissioners in this sort of format for any Q and A, specifically to discuss grant match. Do the Commissioners receive a document via email this morning?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I just, usually I would hand it to you, but we're living in different times.
Okay.
So Commissioners, Parks and Waterways, as you're aware, we've discussed a little bit in the past. It's time to replace our 25-year-old workboat. It's an expensive endeavor. Parks and Waterways has been stacking cash in the Boat Launch User Fee account, and if you have that document in front of you, Commissioners, if you look to the right of your page, you'll see it highlighted there as with match.
Yes.
Our projected fund balance is 287, 307. These numbers provided by the Otters Department. We plan to use 175,000 of those dollars towards grant match, so we will have a robust amount of match, but it's necessary due to the cost of the vessel in combination with the trailer. So preliminary numbers, Commissioners, I'll have better numbers in the next two weeks. Look like the replacement of the workboat with trailer is going to be about 525,000. So we'll be requesting about 350 from the state, matching with our 175,000. So it's our job now to put together a good grant package, but I just wanted the Commissioners to be aware before we bring that application forward, which we do anticipate doing on December 29th at the next Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting.
Okay, so Nick, we're going to be using potentially the 175,000 of the 287,000 and change that's available for the match.
Yes, Commissioner, and we've intentionally stacked that account specifically for this endeavor. And there's no general fund tax dollars, as you know. These are all user fees.
Got it.
Generated by the boaters of Cootney County.
I'm fine. Questions?
Okay. The next one we have, the next one we have is a grant to purchase two snowmobiles, Commissioners. The snowmobile program does not own snowmobile. Volunteers, as you know, ran the program for many years, and we are desperately in need of two snowmobiles. There is a grant match available in the fund balance. If you look to the middle of your page, off to the right there, and the amount is 72,893. However, do keep in mind that we, the Board of County Commissioners approved the repair to the loader to the tune of 20,000, so it will be less that. So we're looking at about 52,000. So still, a good amount of fund balance there. So if we're successful, we would be expending $20,000 of that, approximately 52,000, for the purchase of two snowmobiles necessary to do maintenance in the backcountry.
Okay. And that's, and that's against the beginning balance of almost 202,000?
Well, after expenditures and revenues, if you look to the far of your
Right, go ahead.
The page, the projected fiscal year '21, we're sort of operating from that number there.
Which is what, the, almost the 73,000?
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioners, so if we were to deduct the 20,000 for
Go ahead.
The loader repairs
Right.
forthcoming, which, which may come in less, but that's kind of worst case. We'll be at about 52,000, thus. If we had to use 20 toward match, we'll have about 30, 32,000 and some change projected in, in fund balance at the end of this week.
Okay, fair enough. I'm good.
That's fine. So you'll bring that on the 29th as well?
Business meeting?
Yes, we want to give Grant Management Office some time to review the application as per SOP before we bring it in front of the Commissioners.
Okay.
Okay. Motion?
I'm not sure that we
He's got an action item here.
Yeah, I think it was just
Oh, you want to just, okay, so we'll, okay, we're going to take this up at next, at the business meeting on the 29th?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, Nick, next item. County-owned easement in Athol.
Thank you, Commissioners. I was contacted by a homeowner in the Athol area living in a subdivision who had requested that we develop an easement into a recreational trail. And before I go any further, Commissioners, did you have an opportunity to review the information that I sent last week on this? At least the photos of the location?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you can see it's a, it's a narrow easement in that area that, quite frankly, I wasn't aware the county owned, and that's why I reached out to Rod Jones, who was kind enough to dig into it. Also, just so you're advised, Jamila Holmes has also looked at this, just to make sure the whole team has had a peek at it. That said, my response to the gentleman was, number one, it's really not in my inventory, and it was the first I've heard of it, and based on our current staffing and workloads, it's not, it's not likely that we develop that into a trail. Certainly, you know, not anytime soon. And then shortly after, I was contacted by another gentleman that lives in the same development, Athol, who's the president of the HOA, and he explained that he would like to see that easement vacated. So we've got a situation where you're probably going to have a mixed bag of those who would like to see that easement developed into a trail or at least having the ability to access it for whatever use, and then those that would like to see it go away, probably likely those neighbors that live right next door. In either case, Commissioners, one, it's not in my inventory, i.e., the Commissioners have not, have ever given me any direction to do anything with it, so we're sort of starting from, from that point. Number two, it's my at least thought that it's not incumbent upon me or the county to come forward to, to bring this issue forward. It's really, should be up to the homeowners and the homeowners' association to bring that forward to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration, i.e. either, you know, develop or, or abandon it.
Abandon it.
But either way, the property is not in, in my management as per the Commissioners. I do think it's important that Rod Jones has an opportunity to at least brief you on ownership and how we, how we received the property, et cetera, since he, he's an expert in that and, and I'm not.
Okay. Rod, do you want to jump in here?
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner. Thanks, Nick. So the easement was dedicated as part of the final plat of Silver Leaf Ranch in 2008. It's dedicated to the public. It's five feet either side of the property line, and it's described as a public access easement. It runs from the county road, public road, to the abandoned surrogate trail railway, which is now in the county's possession for recreational purposes. So the trail, from what I understand, are, so even never been built, just the facilities that are constructed, so it's never really been used, and it's pretty brushy, and there's some big trees and other things. So I looked into the history of it a little bit, and when it went through the planning phase, the only comment I found was Lake Highway District, and it basically said that the easement is only 10 feet wide, would be too narrow for maintenance vehicles, and maybe a little value. So I don't, I don't know how it got left on there. Typically, something like that would be constructed by the developer, probably maintained by the homeowners' association, but since it was never constructed, it's never been So I think, I think in order to vacate it, we would need to, either the landowners or the HOA would need to file a vacation application for community development, and then let it go through the statutory process for that public easement vacation. And that would give opportunity for people that are in favor of having that access to have their voice heard also.
Okay. Okay, so Rod, just, what is your role? Who are you representing?
I'm our county surveyor.
Oh, you're our county sur, forgive me. Okay, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just looked into the status of the easement for Nick. So that's kind of what I came up with. I don't, I don't know why it was on the plat to begin with, it's never constructed, so in order to, they want to get rid of it, they're going to have to go through the proper vacation process for statute.
Okay. So is that your recommendation?
That would be my recommendation on, on how to vacate the easements.
Right.
If the, if choose not to, if choose not to vacate easement, then I'm not sure if the county would be interested in constructing a trail if the homeowners' association would, or I don't know that
Yeah. I, I think Nick's earlier point, yeah, makes sense, because, I mean, that's not, I don't think that's something that we necessarily want to be involved with, so maybe vacating is the best option, but
So I think at this point, we're going to wait until the homeowners' association comes forward or the landowners
Right.
come forward and ask anything of us. At this point, we don't have any official requests before us. So it's just as a FYI, hey, this could happen, and we don't want you to be blindsided.
Yep, fair enough. So what, Rod, why don't we leave it at that? Nick, you okay with that? I think you mentioned that earlier.
Yes, Commissioners, what I, what I would like is, is at least board support to respond to both the parties and just let them know essentially that at this time, the county takes no position, essentially I'm paraphrasing for time, and that should they wish to do something different, they can, they can approach the board and follow the process.
With a proposal, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Bill, you okay?
Yes, that sounds like the right thing to do.
Leslie, you're fine, right? Okay, good. All right, then. You have your direction, Nick. You're fine.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Rod.
Okay.
Thanks, Rod.
Rod, thank you. Okay, so moving on to Item Number Four, Pending Items Status Review per the attached list. We have only got two items on here. Okay. Citizen Advisory Committee. Bill, you're still on hold with that for another couple of weeks?
There we go. Correct?
Okay. Not to be confused with the, the commission that you're forming to study the alternative form of government, is that correct?
That's correct. I should have some, a rough draft of bylaws by sometime toward the end of, of January, but that has, that has to be done very carefully.
Okay. All right, then. So facilities expansion. Leslie, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, the conference call was held on December 17th, and I can let Sean go into the details. They're not that happy.
Who's not happy?
No.
LCA?
The
The results.
No, you're not going to be happy.
Okay, go right ahead.
So the good news is, I got the contract off legal for LCA last week. The bad news is, we went up from a $24 million building to a $27 million building, up over three, 3,000 square feet, when the plan was to try to get it from 90 down to 75. The public defender went up 2,818 square feet. Prosecuting attorney went up 3,099 square feet, and we were tentatively able to shave district court by 2,718 square feet. That's not it for sure. So just to put it in perspective, between the public defender and the prosecuting attorney, they now have 30,352 square feet, the equivalent of two and a half floors. So what happened was, everybody just started adding stuff that they think they're going to need clear out through 2040. And at one point, the prosecuting attorney said, I want mine to be the same as the public defender's. So whatever they get, that's what I want. And so that was a big jump in square footage for him. And then, and the public defender added 15 more attorneys from what she had previously said, and then also asked to have the conference room large enough now for 60 people. And again, have, she has to have her own floors, she has to have her own conference room, her own entrance, so nothing changed there. AMP went up 250 square feet. B O C C really didn't change much. Courthold went up 85 square feet for a holding room that AMP can use. And I have some other notes about district court, but I'm just not going to go down that road right now. We can talk about that some other time.
Okay.
So that's where you're at. We're going to, go ahead.
Sean, when are we, I think it's in January when we start to talk, to talk about the CMGC, is when we put that number and just say, okay, we're going to spend 15 million here and we get what we get? Is that the next step?
Well, they're going to, they're going to come, LCA is going to come back up right after New Year's.
Okay.
They're going to do that little exercise where they have everything in little squares and they move it around.
Okay.
See, you know, and then, yeah, I mean, as soon as I get to a point with Ken where we're feeling like we have a good RFQ written, then yeah, we'll have to come up with a number, and then that's, that's when you're going to have to start shaving stuff off.
Okay.
All right.
I think you're going to have to have that discussion sooner than later, because it just keeps going up.
Right. Do you think at this point you want liaisons to get involved with the department, or you want to wait till Ken does his exercise?
Let me talk to Ken about that. That's a good question. Let me, because his exercise is going to be on a $27 million building and not a smaller, scaled-down version.
Right.
So I don't want, I don't want everybody to walk in there and see all those spaces and start moving things around the way they want them, and then they get cut. You see where I'm going with that?
Right. Sean, question. Has LCA looked at the annex location, the site? Okay. Would you have them do that when they're up here? I know you have concerns with it, but, but I'd like to have them look at it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll take them over there. They want to go up and look at the public defender's office, too, so
Yeah, that's fine.
They'll be here, I think, the second week, second week in January.
Okay, good.
So I'll, I'll try to talk to Ken this week and come up with a strategy for that January meeting, and Cory seemed to think that it might not be a bad idea for a conference call between the architect and the board on how to cut this square footage down.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll look, I'll look into it. So that's where we're at.
And, and you know, the thing that strikes me, what's interesting, is when you look at that level, whatever it is, whatever the total square footage is going to come out to be, I keep coming back to the fact that we just purchased a building, and some people might decide, well, first of all, I think when people see it, they'll be anxious to move into it. Whether that's going to work logistically for us, especially when we get involved with public defender and prosecutor, I don't know. But, you know, we, we bought it for a reason, and when you look at this construction schedule potentially, if we're going to get up in the $20 million plus range, we're going to be going out at least probably three years, especially if it turns out there's a second structure. So now I have to look over to K E C and say, wait a minute, we just bought this.
But the issue is the courtrooms.
Right, the issue is the courtrooms.
Unless we go, you know, rehab the building for courtrooms, that this isn't, and, and we knew this going in, K E C and the new building are completely separate. There's no overlap. There's no way to alleviate any pressure downtown.
No, we can't use, you're absolutely right. We cannot use K E C for court and, and associated staff, but that's not to say that we don't have the groups here that can potentially relocate there and free up space.
Correct.
And that's something we're going to have to go through.
Yep.
Okay.
Just, 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 just one more thing, and just doing the math, if you set the number at 15 million, that'll get you about 50,000 square feet.
Which is about the size of the current admin building, is that correct?
Pretty close, yeah. Pretty close.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Bill, any questions for Sean?
No questions. I'm just kind of flabbergasted that we're talking 27 million now. I, I am really, really going to have a hard time, I shouldn't say that, I'm not going to approve anything over 20.
And I agree, Bill.
No matter what.
Yeah.
I agree.
This, this isn't a grab bag. I mean, there's
I don't, I don't know, I don't know why LCA is, I don't know why LCA is even going there, because it ain't going to happen.
Well, they're, they're not going to go there, Bill. They're going to go off whatever you guys tell them to do. Right now, it, for lack of a better, it just seems to me that everybody's piling on right now. It's gone up from what they said they needed last summer, and then it's gone up from what they said they needed a month ago. And so
That's right.
LCA
That's, that's exactly right, and everybody is saying, well, if they're going to get this, I want that.
Right, right.
And that's not the way we do planning in this county.
I, I think what it's going to come down to at some point is there are going to be groups to accommodate and stay within a $20 million ceiling, there are going to be groups that are going to get relocated to K E C. It's just that simple. Most of our growth is north and west, and primarily north, and I think we need to come to grips with that right now. Okay? Sooner than later, rather.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. OEM
You're welcome.
Okay.
Oh, Sean, OEM relocation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here. So we have a meeting Wednesday at nine. Last Wednesday's meeting, it looks like, good news, the 23rd, they're going to be ready for the punch list.
Okay.
So, now the punch list could drag out a little bit. They usually do, because like, there's some things that didn't get painted outside, but it's looking like this is going to be done and paid for on time.
Okay. Anything else for Sean?
Nope.
Sounds good. Well, we missed the PAC airport, Lisa.
I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from, and see if they connected, if Stephen and Wally connected yet.
Okay, I got it.
And then the other thing is, if Nancy has anything to add for audio video?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay. Ready to move, okay, so we're going to move
Hey, I'm going to
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
I'm going to get off.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Fair enough.
Okay, and I just heard back from Stephen that, yes, he has connected with Wally, and they are going back and forth now and looking, looks like PAC's looking at finding some grants to be instead of the rent.
Got it. Fair enough. Okay. All right, then, so then that concludes our status update, pending items. Okay.
So, Bill, I'm going to go ahead and hang up here as soon as we enter into executive session, and then I'll call you back.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
All right. All right, I move we enter... Well, I don't know. Do you want to mention which one or both of them?
Okay, so, we're moving back to what is item number one on our business, which is advisory board appointments and discussion, potential action item. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session? The first item is the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes, so I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061B. You'll have to second.
Oh, second. That's right, Bill's not on.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Entering into executive session, Commissioner Bill Brooks to join us shortly. Set your microphone back. Okay, so, the time is now 11:47. We're about to exit executive session. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move we exit executive session for the Planning Commission with three names to interview, and I'll... I'm sorry, two names to interview, and I'll get those scheduled. And I move that we exit Historic Preservation Commission with four names to schedule for interviews with no decisions being made.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried.